Let's get started. We'll call this meeting to order. And our first order of business is a spotlight. And you're going to be doing that?
Yeah.
All right.
I'll just take a second to share my screen here. Let's see, Cody, do you want to just hit the got it? Just message so then you can, it'll show the full screen then. All right, perfect. Okay, tonight's spotlight is Act thirty-one. This is something that we've spotlighted for school board meetings in the past. It's a nice review to do every few years. Because our practices continue to change and continue to improve. So I'll go through sort of the definitions and requirements as well as some optional components as well. And then we'll talk about like our commitment to the district to Act thirty-one. I'll have a few different examples from the different grade levels and how we meet it. And then we'll end with sort of what our next steps are, how do we engage in continuous improvement regarding this topic? Act thirty-one is the American Indian Studies in Wisconsin. And it's a requirement in all public school districts. And it's also a requirement to pre-service education programs. So all teachers who are licensed in Wisconsin go through these requirements as well. And it's very specific to the instruction on the history, culture, and tribal sovereignty of Wisconsin's eleven federally recognized American Indian nations and tribal communities. I believe the specific requirements, Act thirty-one, for public schools is that this instruction occurs twice in the elementary and once in the high school. And so that's an example of a way that we are committed to exceeding it. We want it integrated into all of our grade levels, all of our content areas, and throughout the whole year as opposed to just standalone days or lessons. To kind of explain how this all sort of fits together, we know that we teach the Wisconsin State Standards. And it's something the school board approves each year. And Wisconsin has done a nice job of integrating some of these components right into the standards. And it's some of the ways that we teach the history and culture, maybe a little bit more obvious or apparent. But tribal sovereignty is an important one too. And so I actually selected one of the Wisconsin State Standards for Social Studies on Political Science. You can see, I think, if you see my mouse here, the standard up here at the top says, "Wisconsin students will analyze and evaluate the powers and processes of political and civic institutions." And then it breaks it down by grade level. So the first one on the left is kindergarten through second grade. This one is actually taught in first grade. And we compare basic political institutions, what a government is, how it differs at the city, state, tribal, country, and global level, and the roles they serve in the lives and the lives of others. So you can kind of see how tribal sovereignty is built right into the standards and right into our first grade instruction. As the standard increases in third and through fifth grade, it talks a little bit more about classifying the basic structures and functions of government specific to local, state, tribal, and federal levels. At the middle school level, you can see it becomes more in-depth. First, we're comparing, now we're classifying. Now, at the middle school level, we're analyzing the structure, functions, powers, limitations of government at the local, state, tribal, and federal levels. And at the high school, we're evaluating the structure and functions of government at each of those levels. Another requirement that we have is observance days. So this is part of Wisconsin State statutes. And it also is a school board policy. So there's twenty-one special observance days throughout the year. You may think that those are very common celebrations or days that we're all aware of, but they're actually, some of them are really unique. And there's even, we're honoring people or events that I didn't know about until teaching here in Washburn or in Wisconsin. But those are required observance days that happen throughout the year. We meet those through announcements and through different activities. And then also Danielle Nepp said does a really nice job. She started to organize resources at the different grade levels so that we can engage in all kinds of collectivities and discussions around each of those observance days throughout the year. And then something in addition to observance days would be proclamation days. So these are made by the governor of Wisconsin. And these are not required, but some of them are really significant or really important, like Indigenous Peoples' Day or Native American Heritage Month. There are very many, there's a whole bunch of proclamation days though. So I think in November alone, there's like either seventy-four or seventy-seven. And so it's sometimes difficult to tease through which ones are things that are really important and a huge part of our curriculum and our instruction, and which ones are maybe just like a fun fact, like Wisconsin's Cheese Curd Day. In addition to that, like we mentioned, we have Native American Heritage Month and Indigenous Peoples' Day, which we're committed to honoring each year. We also don't want to leave it as a standalone, just one day or just one month. We want to ensure it's integrated into our entire curriculum throughout the year. And that goes for other significant days and months as well. And then kind of putting all of those things together for Washburn, what is our commitment to this? And this is something long-range planning's been working on a lot is our, we call it a strategic plan, our mission, our vision, our values. And this strategic goal is part of our sort of vision statement as a district. This is one of our most important components. And what we're committed to is reviewing and updating our curriculum to meet and exceed expectations mandated by the state while embracing our unique culture and history of Washburn. And I think this goal applies so perfectly to Act thirty-one because we're going to meet it, we're going to exceed it, what's mandated by the state. We're also going to embrace our unique culture and history in Washburn. We're very lucky to live where we live. And we are not only teaching about the history, culture, and tribal sovereignty and others. We're teaching about our own community, about our current practices and past practices of our students, of our staff, and of our community members. And I think that's just a really special thing to note too. How does this all fit together? It was sort of hard to find a visual to really represent it. But I thought this maybe table would help visualize what we're doing to organize this and also tie this to our school improvement work. You'll see one of our top five goals for school improvement work last year and this year with standards work. What does that mean? That means organizing all those standards, just like the social studies one we just reviewed into quarters. And we currently have that in place. So at every grade level, you can see exactly which standard is taught in which quarter. Our next step as we organize that is also organizing which units or themes or observance days or special activities are also within those quarters and match with those standards. Because sometimes there's repetition across grade levels, and that may be okay, or that may be redundant. And sometimes we may miss important themes or topics that are not necessarily represented in the standards, but are important to our culture and our community. And so this is a lot of the work that we do that ties into our school improvement practices. Next, we'll actually talk about how we put it into practice. And so at the elementary level, the early learning centers, four K and kindergarten, a lot of the work we do to meet Act thirty-one is through excellent literature. Not only are we choosing literature that has Native American characters, but also written by Native American authors. I was hesitant to put an image to go with it because I don't want to portray this idea that we can select one book, and this one book is going to represent an entire population or entire history or entire cultural practices. But instead, we're using all different kinds of books throughout the entire year. But storytelling, folktales, and read alouds are such an important part in that early literacy and early grade levels. As the students move through elementary school, we continue to use folktales, legends, and literature. We also start to coordinate more closely with local entities like Cliffwick, with excellent resources for us, educational resources. And then also in third grade and in upper elementary into middle and high school, then we really start to focus in on history. And I just want to take a minute to acknowledge that in order to teach accurate history and true history, this is not an add-on, Act thirty-one is not an add-on or an addition or a different perspective. This is our true history and accurate history. And our elementary, middle, and high school do a really excellent job of introducing that history to students in a really appropriate way that's meaningful to them and helps them develop a comprehensive understanding of whether it's the history of our community, of our state, of our country, or of our world. Fourth, fifth, and sixth of some exciting activities that happen there is every year, students in fourth grade team up with our forestry students in high school to collect maple sap and boil it into maple syrup. We have an excellent unit on the Birchberg House in fourth grade that students really are invested in. That's a huge part of that curriculum and ties English Language Arts and Social Studies together. And then fifth and sixth grade, we start to learn, students start to learn about treaty rights and the evolution of those treaty rights over time. Some different examples at the middle school level. We need Act thirty-one through math instruction. It was really interesting to hear about some of the math lessons that are happening in which there's measurements and analysis of tribal lands. It's a context for math equations and math learning. This year, our middle school students did an essay on Indigenous Peoples' Day. You know, what was currently Columbus Day, and that is a state observance day. So we are required to teach about that. We also need to teach in an accurate and meaningful way. And then what does this evolution look like as people honor Indigenous Peoples' Day? And what are the supporting points to move forward with that?
Just to remind the board, we're to action and add Indigenous Peoples' Day to our required observance states by policy.
And then a couple of examples at the high school level. This is a huge part of our US history class and our world history courses. And we even have specific courses in social studies that are unique to our local community. But then also it's coming up in our language courses. And the Waze is one specific resource that we're using. Our family consumer science classes actually did quite a bit of work with harvesting of wild rice and other plants that are native and local to this area, harvesting pumpkins, and then cooking with them and organizing recipes and studying people who have done a lot of work to make this a well-known process. So you can see, it sort of spans across all different grade levels, all content areas, and throughout the entire school year. I also just want to take a minute to acknowledge the fact that we're always going to continue improving. This is not something that we look at as like a one and done, or yep, we meet this requirement, let's move on. But we're always going to engage in improving and expanding. One way we do that is by critical and ongoing analysis of resource and practices. If you think about the literature that we use, we always want to be looking at what are we using it? Whose perspective is it from? Who is the author? Who do the characters represent? And just taking a critical look at the resources that we use and keeping that up to date over time. Another thing, when we were listing off all the practices that we do at each of the different grade levels, I also asked, what are the next steps? What would you like to see us do next? Where can we go further? And something that came up pretty frequently was just incorporating more language. So specifically Ojibwe Mo'inn, which we have now added to our garden signs. And so every label that we have in the garden at the elementary also has the Ojibwe Mo'inn beneath it. But also partnering with native speakers so that we can integrate the language into many of the activities that we do in each of our grade levels. And then just continuing that that practice. We are living such a unique and special area. And we have so many excellent partnerships within this local community that we can continue to work with and help students get to experience things firsthand and have community field trips. So those are a few of the areas that we'll continue to grow in.
Making those signs was so interesting. Send them off to get made, made a better, did a real nice job with that students. And went over to Hurley School, took the signs over to their wood because they had the actual machine that could do all of that. And so it wasn't just making the signs, it was a full, so our middle school kids making the signs. Saying why you were making the sign, what they represented, where they go. So they had a black back of their time in the elementary garden, but also understanding the importance of what they were doing. Had any project.
We don't often talk after about like expression. Is there, like, I don't know how this would work, but I'm hoping that there will be room in our activities. Because that's our natural, like, you know, we can have field trips, we can have outings, we can have partnerships. But our activities are already doing these things. You know, we're already integrating, and we're already collaborating and playing sports. And I just, I wonder if there's like ways to incorporate some of this or improve and improve our experiences or incorporate in some of our like. It seems like such an opportunity.
Absolutely, yeah.
To just be respectful and understand where you're going, like, where am I going to?
Yeah.
And I think that you should, season twelve was a nice leadership, that our sport leadership. So, and I know those are topics that have come up there in the last few years from an unfortunate situation in other schools. But the relationships has had, who's getting problems, the government, and then bringing that back and then sharing that with. Started that. Understand. Things are brought up that need to be corrected a lot. So I think that's an important place.
And another one was planned and then COVID. But we're still at one side of the height in that. We didn't use the last time.
Really cool.
I wonder if we could do something jointly with people because they, I mean, they have a powwow every year at the school. They also have dancing for the younger students almost every week. That there may be some way we can combine with them. When I started working in Bayfield, which is a number of years ago now, I'll have to say, I was actually shocked that I had lived in this area my entire life, and I knew so little about the culture, so little. And we're really surrounded by, you know, the two different reservations. And I was, I was actually, I felt, I felt ashamed that I knew so little about it. So I'm glad that there's much more going on. But I think that it would be great to have, you know, people from Red Cliff come down and do some storytelling and do things like that. I think that would be great for the kids to hear.
Overall student populations. We have a large population, growing population.
Yes.
Is there an opportunity to have like, make like an official liaison to the tribe or something like that? Or to the tribe? Each of the tribes.
One person we started working with is the head of education for the Red Cliff Tribe, Jared Blanchard. And so he's a great resource. And he may have suggestions to and other people to continue to reach out and partner with.
Nice. You know, the, the elementary, when they do their, you know, their dancing on Friday afternoons, it's, it's pretty unique and it's pretty fun. It would be kind of fun to be able to try to incorporate that together because that's a great way for the kids to get to know each other. And they have lots of regalia for the kids to wear and use. And it's a great.
And then just one more, like, once we had a conversation, maybe it was in line playing, but we talked about lacrosse as a club sport. And I don't know if that was like an interest, how we. Maybe that was like a meeting because maybe there's like, maybe I was like definitely interested in it, being like that. But that's another.
The champion still is at the table in the district. So I'm passionate about adding that, just as a sport, not only because of, you know, the growing interest of that sport. There's a lot of teams around us right now. We did reach out to Bayville. If you know, when it's a co-op, at that time, they were not interested. But it's something that I know is still on the goal sheet for Shandor to bring forth to offer. There's always a little pushback about, you know, how many sports can our side support? That is not going to take away from a spring sport or a fall sport. And I look at it as we have very low participation now. I don't look at it as taking away from, maybe you would have a player or two come from something, but it would open up another avenue for a lot of other students. Even if it's just at a club level. Right. To get involved in something.
And is it the, and is it the like traditional Native American lacrosse? Or are you thinking more of the like co-op teams with all the gear and all the comments and everything?
Well, there's two, there's two pathways. One could be a traditional conservative league.
Yeah.
Not as organized or as frequent that they play. So it's not a seasonal type thing. And then the WIAA and then the Minnesota Athletic Association have a structured league. Actually, team sports.
Okay. And I believe we offered it as a summer school option this year, and it had a nice turnout. Yeah.
So hopefully now.
Spoke some interest.
Can we, like, I mean, is it possible to ask like Shandor for an update at the spring or something?
Yeah, I mean, we supported gymnastics for two students.
Thanks, Ivy. We'll move on to public comment. And I know that there was some concern expressed about this statement. I just want, want you to know that there are methods of talking to people if there is a concern about specific people by going to our administration and then following that chain. But making sure that we're not speaking about specific people here not only protects staff, but it protects the people in the audience who might have incorrect information and be saying things in a public forum. So I'm going to go on to say, if you would like to speak for public comment, each person has three minutes, and it's their time alone and cannot pass that time on to someone else. If you have concerns or comments about individuals, those are not appropriate during public comment times. So please don't say anything that would identify circumstances or a person or a group of people directly by what you say. Be respectful. People on Zoom are welcome to join the public comment. Just please put your name in the chat. So I will.
Chat is open.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Jewel Pickert, I, I do understand what you're saying and so forth, but I still respectfully would say that if somebody does have a concern, you know, whether it's with a person or not, you can't control the fact that, you shouldn't try to control the fact that you don't think they should say it publicly in the forum. I don't know that, I was not aware of that particular rule or policy or whatever that you said. You know, you could go to the, and I would imagine that if people have an issue with a teacher or anyone in the school, that's always an option to go ahead and go to that person directly. And, but for some reason, there might be people who maybe because of scheduling or whatever, they can't do that, or they want to come here and say something. So I still think that they should be able to, if, if the situation were to arise, they should be able to speak freely and not have, you know, constraints on them outside of maybe a time limit or being respectful. So that's just my thoughts. Thank you. Let's move on to committee reports. I'm assuming you don't have anything you wanted to talk about, Cody? You didn't want to make a public comment, did you? Okay, just checking. Long-range planning committee?
We had a very nice meeting where we got results of our big survey. They were very, very good results, very good kernel. We got a response. And it was very clear, yes, to go ahead. So we got what we needed, a little extra info on, you know, what each district, whether what the demographics were. But all in all, really good results in turnout. So we can move ahead with a clear intention. We got our administration, administrative reports, but I mean, I'm not going to go into really go gallivant the experts on those. And we also talked about our strategic planning. And it was, I think we were all very clearly in agreement that we didn't want to start fresh with a brand new strategic plan. There's lots of obvious reasons why we don't want to start fresh. You know, we've done a lot of work up to this date, it's been working well for us, but we need to tweak it. We want to get some feedback from the community correct. And we'll be moving forward with that, I think, in December. Otherwise, building ground, we can do a amazing bunch of stuff. We, I think a really great open discussion about a lot of different topics. We got a little fresh update on the website and the updates that are coming on that. The goal, I don't know when the actual goal line for that was. But we got a little viewing of what it's going to look like. And it seems like it's, it's going to be great improvement. We talked about the parental advisory committee, that's my words. That seems to be a huge success and a great addition to how we all, you know, talk to each other, you know, move forward on, on things. And there was some discussion about our extracurricular, the apps, the, the team apps that we use to communicate between the coaches and parents and the team members and kind of some ideas about like, maybe, maybe we should talk about using just one app. But very open discussion about some of those topics. What if anything went missing?
I think just circling to the, we had a nice discussion about the turnout for the survey. They also explained businesses not receiving and then outlining areas. And they explained why some of those outline or border actually Washburn addresses might not have received anything.
They said, what was the why? Yeah, what was the why on that one?
The company that, well, and helped me subtly.
He said it was just basically, you know, they tried their best to cover everything, but the outliers are always difficult, like the outlined areas on where.
Where the lines are?
Where the lines are, I guess. Because they, they outsource that actual mainly to different companies, right? And not even just one company, it sounds like several companies. So I, you know, it wasn't, certainly was not an intentional miss on those outline areas.
But you're talking about a lot of people.
I, I did not hear numbers, so.
No, but I'm saying there's a lot of people that did not receive the mail. I can tell you for sure.
The numbers were on, were on, not the numbers, but the percentages. And they were for the towns, the number that came back from each town.
Yeah, I don't know if they can identify how many were missed because, or how many didn't come back.
Right, because they didn't get them.
Because they didn't get them.
Right, but.
They did point out too, though, that we had new copies too. And we did a lot to try to get access to anybody who might have been missed. We, I think we tried.
I don't think there's, I don't, I don't think the company did a good job. I don't think, I mean, you're talking about a lot of people that were missed. Everybody in our area was.
Even the total mating links doesn't represent each person in the household. So it's just to a destination. But we can figure out, I mean, just twenty-nine percent of the total that we have, we can figure that out quickly in terms of how many, which poll was sent out.
Yeah.
We can probably also reference that with how many, in terms of the addresses.
I mean, because if you're talking about, well, yeah, we had the physical postcards here in the office, how would people even know that if you didn't get any mail?
Well, it was, yeah, they were false.
But people, but people who don't, aren't associated with the school, I mean, I mean, I didn't get one. Nobody in my area got one at all.
No, we didn't get one in our area. And I mean, we're a little ways further off than Ellen. But there isn't anybody beyond us, there's not another district next door to us either, so.
Okay, so then basically we'll just take the population of like Barksdale. It wouldn't even be the population though, because there's more than one person, like only each hole got a, the way to do it has to be address. And we can give that information in our next.
That was the other thing, you know, we have two voters. And you get one, you only get one, one code to enter.
He said it's not an exact size.
Inconvenience, they have to call.
Total was within about ninety-five percent of what segment is in terms of the response. So he was pleased with the total response we received. Not to result, results future itself, the total response in terms of twenty-nine percent are numbers that they don't see.
Well, I mean, to get sixty-four percent from the city of Washburn is a lot. That was huge. But when you only have sixteen, eleven, and ten from the three townships, that's might be because there was so many people didn't get them.
Just to clarify, is that the total, is that comprised the total one hundred percent is how it was broken down?
I don't know.
That percent of that community?
I'm assuming it's the municipality that you live in, so it was whoever sent them back. I don't know what, what it's trying to say exactly.
The way I interpreted it was that that was the one sent out. So if, that's not, again, that's, so that's not going to represent who didn't get a survey at all. I mean, that's what I think.
But I, that's wrong.
Well, you know, and I think that we have to be a little bit careful because that's a big population area. I mean, even though the city is.
It's not sixty-four percent of Washburnians who replied. Of the surveys, sixty-four percent live in Washburn. And sixteen percent of the people who responded, sixteen percent live in Bayfield.
Right.
Okay.
And I hear you said it's all.
Okay, yeah, okay. Well, yeah, you begin, beginning of the, yeah, one of those.
I, I understand that, but I just want to make sure that.
You want, you want us to take the next step and start putting numbers? And that's what the survey was sent out to.
I just want to make sure that the people outside of the city of Washburn are represented. And it doesn't feel like they were. And because even when I brought that to your attention and you talked to him, still nothing.
They went to the company that they used, they cross-referenced all the things they sent them to and.
Well, you know, I, I wouldn't be confident in anything that that company did, because.
I think, I think we, instead of not being confident, I think that we can just proceed with caution. We have a five percent like variable on the, which we get back, or, you know, five percent is not telling you know, like it could go one way or the other. It's, and, and I think that we'll get the numbers and kind of find out, we'll get the numbers. But I think the bigger issue is if we want voices as we're going through this process, we better make sure that we don't have any other kids in the future.
Right.
I would, I would make sure that like.
I think that's a take home. I mean, I do think it was a, a big yes.
Yeah. It was a big yes.
You know, is, I don't know that the, the concern of misconstituents in this question was huge. Not to say it's not important, but it's, it's a red flag for our future staff.
Correct.
You know, like, hey.
I agree.
May or get an opportunity.
Yeah, really double down, triple down, make sure that you're, they're getting a voice.
Yep.
In our next phase, when we talk to Megan next week, we specifically target each of those townships who are going, that day we will get township meetings. It'll be on their agenda, we'll be presenting data, we'll be presenting numbers. So this was to spark conversation, give us some feedback, but when we now market the next part of this, which there was probably sixty questions that came back that people couldn't ask questions. We're going to start tabulating all of those and then go to those areas that had those questions and then give individual presentations to each of those townships, as well as ones that pluck in the school district.
I'm just saying, I, I'm glad that most people said yes, but I'm just saying with all the things that are going on and how people feel about school districts, that you have a big population that wasn't included. So they're thinking like, wow, you know. I know it's a big population, T, and I live up there. There's a lot of people who live up there between, just between me and Sandy's house.
You know, it's not hard to get the, the addresses of all the residents and townships. You can go to Bayfield County and get that list.
I know, I just don't think they try.
That's not hard to do.
Everywhere they sent, and then we'll compare that to which ones were missed.
It wasn't just your area, your area either. Because it was, it was towards Bayfield.
I believe it was the township.
People stopped me because I got extra cards from him and passed them out. And it was some people in town didn't get them. And, and my concern about that was the community doesn't, you know, you, you lose that kind of faith and from the community because you're not, they're not reaching everybody. And it, it's not carefully done in their minds. And everybody's informed. And then, so you have that issue. And then you have some older people that I ran into at the coffee shop that did not get them at different areas all throughout, some up at Big Rock, some on the highway, yeah, some in town, some out of town. And, and they got the card, you know, I gave them the card, and there's two people in the house, they both wanted to vote. Well, then they had to either go online or call. Well, some of them don't know how to work a computer. You know, and that whole thing in the first place, entering the code and all that was confusing, so. You know, we have an older population around here, so maybe you should kind of look at that too, you know.
One of our, our big goals is to reach to all of that, we don't get referendum and, and surprise to anybody. It's not, we didn't get a date about like this, but I mean, it's good to, to have this error now versus down the road, so that you can identify it. And certainly let us know what your ideas are, for making sure we can reach that. Aside from, you know, getting any mailings correctly to the right houses, but, you know, those bigger issues of how to get surveys answered in a non-computer world, like what, or get the information out to them. And maybe it's more door-to-door stuff if that gets closely down, down the wire on that.
Okay, anything more with long range planning?
Starlink was a better mental site, so we didn't have, not that, maybe we spent a little time talking about, not that we want more, you know, devices out there with the purposes to be out there being nature, but just to have some connection for the students to do, you know, any kind of research out there for us to be able to post meetings out there that would have to, you know, zoom in and install. But we did a great job of getting help on the route, not falling off, and getting Starlink picked up. We also, I think we might have mentioned that Season Twelve is, we signed on with Season Twelve to do a security audit. Cybersecurity audit, so just making sure that it's not one hundred percent, but looking at what we currently have, our firewalls, our response, our notifications. I know Cody does a lot of fishing expeditions with our staff, but we're stop-starting and having them come in and work with Cody to examine that, I think was another piece we talked about. And then the website, since our meeting, Matt did not change the front page because of the data about the survey on it. It's now been changed, so if you go on the, the website, you can see some, you know, new look to it. It's not a new website, but it's a new look to our current website. And they also, there was a lot of discussions about not having access to schedules, all the winter schedules on.
I think you got it. Good job.
All right, thank you. School Improvement Committee?
That's going to start through, oh, that's right. I don't remember about what that one was. Ivy, School Improvement, we thought, we also had a great live conversation on that one. What did we talk about?
Yeah, so we started off with a review of mission, vision, collective commitments, just to ground our work. We reviewed the data from this fall so far, so students have taken a universal screener right when school started, and actually we're already seeing growth from students in both math and proficient, math and ELA just since that, so that the end of the quarter, so that was exciting to see. We did hand calculate the data from our state assessment from the spring. And so that will be released on a school report card, actually, on next Tuesday. And so that will go up to the public, we'll post on our website like we always do, but it was nice, we kind of did the calculations ahead of time to see what that looked like. And we saw increase in proficiency levels in both math and reading in the elementary, in the middle school and in the high schools. That was very exciting, that was our goal. It may not reflect on the report card with the stars or with the overall score, because it's a complex system that they use, lots of different factors, but we'll go through all of that in the December board meeting like we did last year. And then we just talked about what the new focus areas will be for this year, some of them are the same as last year. Some of them are new because we're working on those cycles and some are short and some are long. And we highlighted a lot of the work that was actually done this summer, and that was a big goal for us, was that we didn't wait until this next round of data comes out that we continue this work all through the year and into the future years. And so just a really big shout out to the staffer, we adopted a new math resource and that, in that short amount of time, and for our staff to implement that and all three buildings is pretty amazing. They've done a lot of work and it's same thing with phonics instruction, really great changes there in a short amount of time. And then we just had some good conversations about how to support students who are above proficiency. We often focus on students who may be below and making sure we have good challenging opportunities for all students. And then I think the last piece was just on different types of data. So we look at proficiency level, that's just one piece, it's one snapshot, but also looking at different things like involvement extracurriculars or different, like looking more at science and social studies, looking at specific skills within proficiency levels and just taking a kind of a comprehensive look at students to ensure that we're meeting our mission of contributing citizens in a global society.
We did a lot of discussions, again, about the high ceiling, low floor, I just, all those students. We talked a little bit about with that race and culture or, you know, some of the discussions that we had about Native American culture. You know, getting involved with all the school activities, making sure that we're doing what's right there. And we talked about ways that we can increase visibility and transparency to on all the things that the school's doing, you know, all the amazing stuff that sometimes doesn't get communicated on the website. Do that, also, you know, more after-school activities, some of the events that we're planning, those sorts of things.
All right.
One thousand one hundred forty-three homes, households, apartments. Emailing you the, all the addresses. Now, no business has received one thousand one hundred forty-three.
And not population, that's not the population.
Households.
Households.
Janet, what am I trying, I'm trying to think of where it is at the county that you can go and get the list of.
I know, when we did that first referendum, we knew that we did that. I was fired, we did it though.
Lynn Adams would know, because she uses it for, she gets, uses them to get for the town of Washburn, so I can find out the department in the county that you can go to for, and get the three townships, the households.
According to Lindsay Nas, they went through the counting, double-checked with the post office. They had concerns in the area of Barksdale based on the boundary map that the district divided them.
Well, that I can understand.
But one thousand one hundred forty-three, we'll figure out which ones were missed, and if you know anyone that's on there by name or by address, let me know. We'll try to figure out why they didn't get the mail.
Okay.
Well, we'll keep doing that.
I know the response next to that one. Mine didn't count.
People got it on Monday, I got mine like a whole day later.
Well, we didn't get one either.
Well, and sometimes the post office has some issues too, I'll have to say. I know that our clerk got a absentee ballot about a month ago from April. So that's a little not okay.
But if they look at those, like I said, it's cross-reference.
Okay.
One thousand one hundred forty-three.
All right. Administrative reports?
Well, we had, you know, a nice series of meetings, with some of the things that I only report, the things that we didn't cover on a panel at Northland, Northland College on Monday. Talk about teacher shortage, so. Presenting their personnel meeting coming up to review personnel, personal changes, make sure the current process going into the spring, couple vacancies, how those will be filled, a whole reassignments that we're working on over the next couple of weeks. And then the support staff handle, Matt, once, I was support staff, they gave us all the language changes. I'm my best to type those up, Janet has the schedule, so we're going to have another meeting and then we'll leave the personnel. Then we're following up with minor number fifteen, so we're talking about our next steps, putting that fifty-five million dollars and prioritized areas, but now we'll come up with a a more concrete plan on what's within the school reality. We'll start working that in the following month. And if I could just speak to the high school. Special, special congratulations to the soccer team, we're doing as well as they did, as well as bringing some much-needed respect to small school Northern Highway Eight. Wasn't able to go on Friday, but it was, watched the entire game online and the commentators were talking about how it began. And then by the, you know, end of the second period, they're like, I don't know how this team wasn't ranked at all in the state of Wisconsin, because they took the number two team to double over. Just a great shout out to the coach and the team.
Excellent.
Oh, one other thing I can share from Angie's report is just on the Professional Development Committee, which is taking on some of the school improvement work, each of those teams are working collaboratively and offering some nice after-hours professional development sessions on standard work, opportunities for teachers to either gain new information, receive that information, but also just to time and space to work and collaborate. And then also a little cross-reference between Professional Development Committee and the Wellness Committee, which the Wellness Committee meets and focuses on both staff wellness and student wellness, and putting some nice pieces in place to support our staff, just some nice options, whether it's social events or related to physical wellness. So those two teams are working together to support our, our crew. For the elementary, we closed out the first quarter, so report cards for elementary students go home on Monday. And then we also will be sending home the individual student scores for the Ford Exam, the state test from this spring. So that will go home with the report cards, so families can see two sets of data, different information, that's just for third through sixth. And then of course, the seventh, eighth and tenth graders. And then we have parent-teacher conferences coming up, and so we're on Thursday night of next week as well as Monday. And younger grades is a little bit more student-centered, the student will come with and show their family, and then they'll also have an opportunity to talk. And in the upper elementary, it's a little bit more traditional with just the family and the teacher communicating about strengths and areas of growth for each student. We did have our color run, which was a really, really fun experience. That's our annual fundraiser hosted by the PTO, our parent-teacher organization. Usually it's a walk-a-thon, sometimes it's a read-a-thon or move-a-thon, this year was a color run. We didn't know how it was going to go, we'd never done that before, but it was so fun. All the kids received a white t-shirt. They actually received sunglasses, it was a beautiful day and their music playing and colors going everywhere. There's an opportunity to just decorate your shirt if you weren't comfortable having, getting all messy with color. We had wonderful PTO volunteers and just the head of PTO care did a great job with it, so it was really fun. Curriculum Council met early this month, and we actually combined Curriculum Council with Technology Committee, and so we had some technology updates too. So we talked a little bit about website and this late conference in which we'll focus on AI and how that impacts schools and policies and instruction. When it comes to the Curriculum Council, we also worked a lot on just the resources that we've been updating or what lies ahead for us. Something that we're keeping a close eye on is reading resources, and so we've done some changes at the early elementary level of phonics instruction. But we're looking for a common resource for reading instruction at the middle school, high school. So that's something you may continue to receive updates on as we move forward and look at next year. And then also, when it comes to legislation, Act Twenty is passed in Wisconsin, and so there's some very specific requirements on early literacy for public schools. Within that, those requirements, there's lots of changes for everybody. But really, Washburn has had many of those things, components in place, at least to some degree, and so it won't be, it doesn't feel like a big scary thing or huge significant changes for us. Overall, the state impact, I think it will be pretty significant, but we'll continue to share those updates with you and just what that looks like for us when it comes to the screeners that we use, the individual plans we provide for students. I do believe there'll be a policy required by the board in the future. Coaches, instructional coaches for reading, and we'll, we'll continue to provide updates on that. School Improvement Committee met, but we gave the update on that one. And then Parent Advisory Committee, we also met, that was our first meeting at the elementary. And really great to have so many different parents and different perspectives in the same space at the same time, sharing strengths of the elementary school as well as areas that we'd like to see improved and continue to grow on. We have lots of different input and different ideas, and so if you remember, it's a very big committee, bigger than you traditionally have for that type of advisory committee. And we had originally said quarterly and, and kind of this traditional model of like advise the school, the school will do some research, report back to this committee. But that group's pretty active, they're pretty involved and they're willing to meet more frequently. So we decided to meet more similar to monthly and focus in on a few specific topics. We did a little survey, had about half the team write back and say which they wanted to focus on. So in this month, we'll focus on discipline and accountability, what does that look like at the elementary level, how does that truly support education and the needs of our students? And then in December, we'll look at student nutrition and food service, receive feedback and ideas there. And then in January, we come back all together as a team, and so for those two meetings, not all team members may attend, they just made it go to one or the other. And then in January, all come back together, we'll review those two things, and then the other three topics for school safety. Just overview, what does that look like? Like we have a lockdown drill coming up at the end of the month, what does that process look like? Helping parents understand that, academic achievement instruction will cover that. And then actually, the, the third topic was ways we can support our teachers as a community, and I thought that was really great, that that came from the community, that wasn't something I suggested. But the community brought that forward, and I thought that was something really great we can focus on too. And then my last update is actually just about the ELC. And so since I submitted the board report, we've had a few changes in the community. We know childcare in our community is a need and a priority of our board, and we did unfortunately Evergreen Ashland closed. And so we're just looking to see how that's going to impact our community and specifically our early learning center. Right now, we've had three new students added to our waitlist since Evergreen closed, so we'll keep a close eye on that. Right now, just an update on our waitlist. Um, right now, just an update on our waitlist, we have got six students on the preschool room waitlist. We have eight on the toddler room waitlist, and we have thirty on the infant room waitlist. Of that thirty, eight are, um, from, of staff members or families who are currently enrolled, so it would be the top of the waitlist.
How many are staff are currently?
Eight, uh huh, yep. And then six on that waitlist will turn to in January, which would mean they would then shift to the toddler room waitlist. So those waitlist numbers will continue to change based on the age of the students. Uh, one thing that we've talked about, Dr. Wyder, myself and Jamie Lightner as the ELC director, is posting for a second preschool room teacher. The ratio in that room is ten to one right now. Uh, with a few more students on the waitlist and a few students moving from the toddler room to the preschool room, we'd like to add a second teacher and increase it to twenty to two, so it's stay at the same ratio, we would have more students. Um, and we're hoping that if we were able to post that soon, we would then uh, potentially add that position, position in January. And then we'd have some shifting from transitioning from other rooms, so it actually opened up spots in the baby room, in the toddler and the preschool room. Not a ton, but some, and always good to keep moving in that direction, so we'll continue forward there.
Can you, do you have the, um, numbers in each of those rooms right now?
Yeah, yep, so the baby, the infant room is eight students, so that's a four to one ratio.
Uh huh.
The toddler room is twelve students, that's six to one. And then currently, the preschool room is ten to one, and then we'll, we're hoping to then transition to twenty to two, so twenty students.
Okay, so how many is in there right now?
Ten.
And the preschool, probably mostly three and people turning four this year.
Correct.
Cause we have four day a week, four K.
Yeah, five day a week, four K, right. And so this is the first year we weren't sure what that weight would, would look like, we were able to significantly reduce it, that's why it was six and previously it's always been double digits. Because of that shift in four K.
Hmm.
And then it was even lower than six prior to, at the start of the year, which is why we didn't have a twenty, twenty students there, but now we're ready as the waitlist increases and the toddler room transitions.
Do we have space if, I mean, I know that it's hard to get staff too, but do we have space to have any additional?
Right now, we have space for those threes, for that increase of more preschool students. Um, beyond that, we, we, we do not.
And there's been people contacting Washburn because of the Evergreen closing?
So far.
The three, just the three.
Yep.
Evergreen actually closes what, December or?
December first.
Point, so there may be more.
Uh huh. Okay, thank you. Approval of financial reports and bills?
Um, okay, so just a couple of comments seems like, um, I, I don't know, Jen, I'm gonna ask you, um, over the past year, it just seems like there's more like Amazon vendors and more and more, because it's just like, it's so convenient, it's so easy. Uh, and that's, I, that's, I really noticed that this month in particular, I don't know if you guys noticed that with you, like ever go through those things, but and it's also October, you know, like this is like the start of the school year, and again, I noticed that last month, people getting the classes ready, it's like, yep, that's still was kind of coming through this month as well, and, um, but you were gonna put that right, just a lot more.
We've got a lot of it, it's, it's just, you know, you have starting requisition, you go out, you know, the line, you check out, it goes right into the, the, the pool, and yeah, the game was for the.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, this, I think a lot of other, I was very generous, so it's not like you develop it or anything, but a lot of it. But everybody seems to love it, so.
That's just an announcement. Should you guys know, but, um, review, uh, I review the October twenty twenty-three, and, uh, would move to.
I have a question. Um, Dr. Wyder. Can you wait just a second, we need a second.
Oh, finish the motion, then we'll discuss.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, no, we can, go ahead. I, I was just looking at the, the tech lease agreement. So is that for new security systems or existing, not upgrading?
It's upgrading or we have an existing system, it's upgrading all of the, that's the one that on the action item down below.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, okay. Okay. Any other questions? Do we need to do a voice vote on the, on the financials or not? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda.
I want to approve the consent agenda.
A second. Are there any questions, comments?
I have one.
Okay.
Um. Do you, what's the plan for Dan leaving the kitchen?
I, uh, talked to Dan about possibly just staying on, part-time or doing some homework, and he's gonna be definitely December for us. A lot depends on the sixteenth.
Uh huh.
Uh, but the plan is that, uh, we have it posted. And we have a really, really, really good candidate that we're gonna reach out to, so hopefully we'll have a little time for transition between Dan leaving officially and the person study.
That's good.
Without that, uh, we'll, um, Jen, I had to go back to what we were doing prior to, I will reach out and get some assistance from, for the venue, making sure that our ordering is done, we're looking at various options of planning, but, but it's all, but for right now, through December, uh, David's gonna do the menu and ordering for us. Um, we have a posting officer, a service worker, we have a candidate come right in. Local places, why they're in the area, so, our businesses currently in for the service runs as all restaurants.
Good.
Do you have also a question? Thanks, that's again, number three. I approve middle school sophomore.
Uh, we're trying to rebuild our program.
Oh.
Probably haven't had girls, but it was most people a lot. So bringing, uh, the program into the middle school, starting to getting them interested, getting a scoreboard, all those things that we need to do for that field, uh, and that program, that rebuild interest. We know there's interest in the middle school, and we're thinking by forming an actual team, getting them organized, that'll carry the rest.
Okay.
All right, all in favor of the consent agenda?
Hi.
Hi. Opposed? Motion carried. Discussion item, items. Legislative advocacy update? I don't, I don't have anything for that, do you, Tom?
Just a couple of things to keep our eye on, eyes on, so parental bill of rights, that's currently on being discussed, bill five ten. I, I'll send it out to the entire board, the WA, illegal updates, but it's one that definitely read. Uh, and they're also discussing, uh, bill two two three, two seven one, two five seventy-five, three seventy-five fifty, I'll also send all those. Um, it's one of those things that, you know, we start looking at prior to the, um, support convention in January about, they throw these things out, they have some discussions about these things. Um, WASP was, SAA then will lobby for specific platforms, so I'll get these out to the entire board. Those are just things, right now, they're just, you know, on the floor, discussing things, presenting things, uh, but a couple of those are to keep our eyes.
Right. CISA twelve?
Um, during the October meeting, um, it was reported that all CIs have been charged with some large projects this year, and this year, Act twenty, the K through three literacy is like a big one.
Uh huh.
Um, there's a nine-member council established that will be working to review curriculum resources to make sure that they meet science-based literacy guidelines. Reviewing early reading and readiness assessments and screenings. Um, what specific interventions should be established to make sure all students make progress? And making sure all teachers are trained in reading instruction by twenty twenty-five. Um, then there was an oral report given regarding the peer review mentor grant and educator effectiveness. Uh, CISA twelve writes the peer review mentor grant on behalf of our districts, and there's sixteen of seventeen districts in the CISA twelve that are benefiting from the grant this year. CISA twelve is providing coaching support for eighty initial educators through these grants this year. That's quite a few. Um, additionally, support through the grant includes initial educator networking and training and leadership coaching.
I have a question, so you said the, um, each fifth that will get kind of like an assignment? And Act twenty was CISA twelve's assignment, is that?
Yes.
Okay, so is that assignment because that's something that CISA twelve needs to improve? Or is that because the state wants us to be experts in that area, so we can disseminate said information to others just? You see the difference?
Um.
You know what I mean? Like, that's something the state was looking at, like, hmm, you guys need better focus on that, no, it's.
I don't think that's, that's it at all.
Okay, it's because, it's because they want resources about Act twenty for the state of Wisconsin, and they just assigned CISA to them. Or.
Yes, and I think all the CIs are working pretty heavily on Act twenty.
Oh.
But the each Cis is gonna have some significant responsibilities to work with each of the districts.
Ah.
So it's, it's be a big project for a lot of them, but yeah, it's a big focus for CISA twelve right now.
Oh, great.
A lot of CIs' work comes from, you said the following, so.
Yeah.
When we receive federal funds for any kind of consent, it's, it's, it's a state that comes out with one rules and regulations that it's designated that I'll through the trade through.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
All right, do you have your board goals with you?
I did pop them in the shared drive to everyone.
Uh huh. I need a copy. Yeah, Julie. Thank you. Um, I just wanna quickly review these, um, we didn't, what we did not do is do like some action items for each one, we just, we put the goals, some of them are action items, um, we have a consultant, so that is, we're on our way there. Um, determine administrative needs, I think we've had that conversation. Um, I don't know that we're making any changes at this point in time, correct? Um. Increased knowledge of policies and job descriptions by administrative staff. You know, that might be something that we should be looking at as far as getting the job descriptions for, um, the superintendent principals, um, other administrative administrators. If we could get copies of those, just so that we have our ability to review them all.
Uh huh.
Does that make sense for everybody? Anything else you wanna add to that one? I mean, I think we're looking at policies regularly, but um, if you could get us those job descriptions, I think that would be helpful. Hiring process, um, I know that, you know, we've had some conversation about that, and I don't know that it's totally clear for everybody at this point in time, is, am I correct on that?
Yeah.
Uh huh. So, you know, I don't know if there would be, I know that you've, we've had some conversation and you've written some things down, but is that something that you could put together in a document of some sort? Facilitate transition for new administrative staff, I think we're working on that. Um, improve communication between board and administrative staff. Is there anything in particular that we want to do with that?
Um, is that also part of, I, like, my impression is that Nick was like, hey, we've got, we've got this, like, but, like, a lot of the services are kind of wrapped around.
Uh huh.
And so when I, and like reading, I'm, I was trying to find what, like, some of the stuff that he had given us, but, um, like, the transition and even, even the hiring process.
Uh huh.
Um, I really thought a lot of that was coming from Nick.
Uh huh. I think the hiring process for the administrator we have from Nick, but I know the hiring process for the teachers would be, is, is what I was kind of talking about, but the administrative piece, I think we do have that. And we are following that because we do have a meeting next Monday, remember? Okay. Um. And we still need to look at a board self-evaluation, and I've been looking at some information on that.
Yeah, didn't he have some?
He suggested we go to the school board association for that. Um, actually, there's quite a bit about that in the, in the book that Tina lent to me last month about self-evaluation, so we might do just something through that. Um, the second goal, provide opportunities for all students and families to be actively engaged while feeling safe and supported um, during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, um, provide support to continue with the green and healthy school concept. I don't know that we've done anything exactly on that, but other than continuing to support it.
I mean, it's come up in line planning, and also it's come up in the parent advisory committee.
Okay.
So, um, so I don't know, um, like, we're, it sounds like we've got like another, like potential transition in our food service.
Uh huh.
Permit. And, uh, and I think that we'll just, I mean, we've kind of actually been just staying abreast of that, I guess.
Okay.
That's what we can do.
Well, I think by having it on here, we're all acknowledging it as an important.
Uh huh.
And, and so we take that out to our various committees, and it's, you know, it's a reminder at each of those committee to, you know, keep those things in mind, keep that green and healthy school concept in mind.
Review and change policies that relate to student safety. And I know you were talking about the, with the parent advisory, that was one of the things that you were doing there too, as far as, you know. Having to, having to do the lockdown process.
True.
I say that kind of negatively, but I think negatively of that, but. All right, um, explore facility structure signage and visuals to ensure a safe and welcoming environment.
Sounds like school improvement. Maybe, moment of planning, all that is going on, as we move forward with those projects.
I mean, that, I mean, just doing the audit, safety, the king of safety, the buildings, the grounds, the plants, flowers, the trees, the sidewalks, all of that has gone into everything, right? Work so far.
Encourage family engagement, including resident families and open enrollment families. And I think we're looking at an emphasis with the open enrollment families. Have, are there people in, in the parent advisory group that are open enrollment?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yep.
Elementary, middle, and high school, and I also believe athletic advisory.
Uh huh. Good. Is, does anybody else have any ideas of what, if there's anything else we could do with that particular piece right now?
I think the strategic planning survey that we'll be sending out is gonna bring in a lot of voices and a lot of information from those groups as well.
Okay.
For that December, January-ish, we're reaching out to every one of our students, students, parents, community members, staff.
And again, I think it's, as kind of, you know, what we talked about with that previous survey that we just talked about, like, if you miss a population, you know, look at that as we're going in and keeping these particular, especially our open enrollment families in mind as we're taking up the next certain thing.
Uh huh. Uh, research possible ways to increase daycare and early childhood programming. And I, I know we were going to have a meeting, but we didn't, that never happened with the county. There was conversation.
Mark's been emailing us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
We've had ongoing conversations.
Okay.
We've been.
I know he's pursuing some grants.
Hmm.
Um, we have costs from St. Louis, we've got a communication with St. Louis, Kansas called the last week about St. Louis.
Um.
Financial priority, I mean, it comes down to money, how much do we want to put into the building? That we would lease, um, because we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars to get it to the level that we should be morning star, young star, young star, started the ball, young star, three stars, four stars.
Five.
Nine and a stars, um, when it starts with access, abatement of asbestos.
Bathrooms.
Bathrooms, viral systems. Just to be able to get into the classrooms.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah.
A lot more.
A good decade.
And I did share that with Cap, that right now, everybody knows there's a need. We all know there's, it's that difficult to get teachers. Everybody knows there's a need, we all know there's, it's difficult to get teachers to, uh, in this area, in the, in the industry in general. And it just comes off, they have space, but it's gonna. Substantial amount.
Are there any other spaces?
It was not the original plan of the new game, was it?
We have options.
Okay.
Middle school traditionally been, you know, six, seven, and eight. Sixth grade over, there's enrollment, sixth grade. You you get two, three more classrooms right off the top. So there are options.
Okay.
Look at office space, you look at other areas within the elementary school, there's space.
And whether there's people or not, is the trick.
Teacher, I mean, it's, you know, licensed, I mean, it's to keep our stars where we want. I mean, we did get downgraded a little bit because we didn't have the academic requirements for our staff. Um, so we have people, but to get to that. Better star, brighter star, whatever, five star, um, our staff, they're trained, or they get trained. Uh, program. Or what's time, stop their.
Couple of years ago, it's been a while.
It's been a while, yep.
Because there's such a need. Uh, they weren't able to do it. So now the most is yet good on Rice Lake or, um, Richmond. And. How are we gonna get people to move up here? Well, housing is an issue.
Sure.
After they go to school down there, so.
And our staff does pursue all kinds of educational experiences all the time, but it isn't the ones to qualify for this hard increase.
Now, it wasn't.
Yeah, yeah.
Saying anything, thank you for that, it's just. Just that's a part of it.
It's a requirement, yeah.
Or maybe we have to just, you know, like, suck it up and go for four stars.
Not in our nature.
But to provide the service.
Yeah, cuz we still do, we receive five stars for the quality of care and then.
Right.
Not provide.
Right.
Yeah.
It's, some of it's paperwork kind of stuff. All right, um, the third goal we have by the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we'll have new strategic plan. To guide the district through the next five years, and I know you responded to that, we're working with a consultant. That's in place. And we're working with Myron for the building needs. Um, and continuing support for school improvement work. There's a lot of that going on. So. We're doing okay. Um, but I think we need to just keep this in mind so that we can continue to, and we haven't done this before, that I know of. So, you know, it's a different process of just kind of going through there and keeping us on track too.
It's an aggressive, and I think you came up with a long-range plan, it's an aggressive year.
Absolutely. Okay, all right, thank you for that. Um, publication of notice for school board election?
W A S B sent out, um, the spring elections timelines, and November has a few timelines, but one of those is. To publish a notice for the.
You need to sign this, I did sign it. I already saw it. Then why are we passing it around? Good job. All right. Individual action items. Um, number one, call for a vote to approve the second reading. Of the various policies. Is there a motion?
I moved to vote to approve the second reading of the policy updates that's listed in each of that.
I'll second. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Number two?
Make a motion to, to approve the state, the date for next year's annual meeting. As October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four at six P M.
I'll second. Uh, any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Number three?
The request about moving it to this location instead of the cafeteria for. Acoustics.
Oh, yeah.
Again, this is if people were just like, they couldn't hear in the cafeteria.
Right. Maybe we could talk to somebody about doing some kind of ampli- ampli- amplification in there? Would that be? Okay.
The feedback. There might be where to do it.
Is this room that much smaller than the cafeteria or?
I think it was more accessibility. They just have to go in the door, to the cafeteria, down, round and up.
Will you table that, or do we have to move to the location?
Think on that. Okay, number three?
I move to approve Steve Whit as high school girl head basketball coach.
Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number four? I move to approve tech lease district security system.
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. And we need a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
We are adjourned, thank you, everyone. It's next Monday.